Father, we thank you for a great day today. Thank you for the opportunity to live in this country and this great community. Thank you for our leaders, business owners, our school officials. Thank you for all that you're doing that we can't see. Bless this meeting today. Lord, increase wisdom and knowledge in every decision where there needs to be made in Jesus' name.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, in this soul with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
I've noted for the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agendas. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Public comments. This is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address. Speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments? Hold on, Mike. Moving on to our senior center budget requests, and I think we have Josh here today to bring up that request. Feel free to come up to the podium.
So my name is Joshua Rafford, the senior centers general manager, been there for about four months now. And it was brought to my attention that we have the city meeting coming up and that part of our operating funds that we get on a yearly basis comes from the city. So I wrote up a proposal and submitted it for review.
The question is on the packet reference, and presumably you guys are asking for $10,000 in operating budget, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this similar, is this the same as last year's request? Josh, about how many people do you all serve per day?
On average, we're, we're actually increasing month by month now. Today was over eighty-two.
Okay.
That includes seniors that are, I call it my Meals on Wheels program, for those that may not be able to come out to the center for in-person meals, usually due to disabilities or health issues. Also includes our, anyone that comes in for like a to-go meal. I do have a few of those. Often they're caretakers of seniors. They'll come in, pick up for the senior themselves and bring it to them. And then I really strongly encourage my seniors to come in and have like a, we try and foster a family-oriented meal. We did the pledge, we have invocation. We do announcements and we try and sit together. I have six tables now. We try to sit together and have a meal together, spend time, socializing. Really helps with depression. Isolationism. I've got a pool table that I just had renovated, so we have, you know, I encourage everybody to come in. We have card games, puzzles. I've been adding more activities as I can. We also have some health clinics that started to come back. Because of COVID, we had to reduce that drastically. We have our clinics are coming back now. I've got a foot care clinic, I've got a hearing aid clinic, I've got a VA representative that's coming by now. Blood pressure clinic. We just started doing a diabetes clinic as well, so. I really try and encourage them to come in, meet with everybody, you know. It's a mouth, it's a mobile. I have an exercise group as well that runs three times a week. So all of those things. Unfortunately, it costs money. We need, you know, help with maintaining the electric and the food program is actually covered by Manhattan. But everything else, the senior center covers.
Questions?
I think there's tremendous value in what they offer. We know that, especially with the aging population, that mental health concerns are significant. COVID didn't do a lot to help that, so try to make sure that they're fed and well-engaged.
Other questions? Our next step will be, we'll consider this during our budget time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to the minutes of the May 4th, 2022 meeting. A motion by Commissioner Bellin, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2022 meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number nine.
I might issue up there, which is three of the things that we did yesterday. We wanted to pay question sales for their demo projects, and then that also sent with the Central Regional Planning Commission for that. And then we just had something else that was out there. Someone hadn't paid it. It was an overpayment on an account. Those will just be part of what you approve.
I'm going to approve appropriation ordinance number nine. There is a motion by Commissioner Bellin, a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number nine. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Twenty twenty-one audit presentation.
Good evening. Neil Phillips from Jared Gillmor Phillips prepared your intended audit for this year. Let's dive right into the bound document and we're going to turn straight into page one. Those of you who've been on commission before, you're going to notice a lot of changes in the audit report. There's some new standards that came out, new rules. The auditors like to change up the rules on ourselves. And so we've actually got new wording in which the opinion paragraph shows up first. When you look at the first paragraph, we talk about it being an adverse opinion. And that is an adverse opinion because in the state of Kansas, we follow the Kansas cash basis and budget laws. They call it a regulatory basis of accounting. But if you go down, down to the third paragraph there, it talks about an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And what that means is that based on the testing we did, we feel like you have a materially accurate representation of what happened during the year and how you ended the year without any further modification being needed. So we feel like you've got materially accurate numbers represented here, is what that means. The rest of that page talks about the adverse opinion about how we don't record capital assets, our long-term debts, just a footnote. We don't record a lot of the GASB things like the OPEV, the post-employment benefits, your capers liability that's out there. It doesn't show up as a liability or a financial statement. It's only a footnote disclosed. We get down to the very bottom. It does talk about management's responsibilities. Used to be one paragraph, it's now two. Basically, it's telling you that everything in here is your document. They're your numbers. This is actually your document. We do type it up and put it in the paper here. Actually, Amber gives us the first draft. She's very good, one of the few cities that does that. But these are your numbers and your representations of what happened during the year. The next page talks about the auditor's responsibilities. And again, that paragraph expanded, but we follow auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America. We follow the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. And then because of the federal money that you had flowing through the city this last year, we actually had to follow government auditing standards. So there's actually another, we actually had to test you on three layers of testing. The AICPA testing, the government auditing standards, and then K-MAG testing. So we've actually got three layers of testing when we do your audit. Very bottom paragraph talks about the supplemental information, and it's going to tell you that we did audit everything that's in the bound document here. And then the very last page or paragraph on page two there talks about the government auditing standards, tells you there are other audit reports that are out there. Some auditors actually hand you two sets of reports, one for the government auditing standards and one for the AICPA. They actually call it a single audit reporting package, so we think it makes better sense to put it in the same document. So you're going to see it at the back of this document. Page four and five is where we spend the majority of our time. Statement number one, defined by the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, is to show users at a glance that we are in compliance with the cash basis laws. So if you look at that fourth column over, ending unencumbered cash, if any of those were negative, you'd be in violation of Kansas statutes. And at a glance, you can glance down through there and see that all of our funds ended positive. I also like this statement because a lot of times people hear, oh, we have $7 million in the bank. Why are we not doing this? Why are we not doing that? Well, this statement helps break that down. Like, the very top line is your general fund. You can see we started the year out with a million, brought in eight point six, spent nine point two, actually ended the year with $462,000 in the general fund. Then you've got your special purpose funds. Those are monies by statute are restricted for that purpose. Special highway is usually the easiest one to explain because every time somebody puts gas in their car in the state of Kansas, some gas tax goes to the state. It turns around and comes to us based on population, and then you cannot spend it for anything, the streets and alleys. We had a water line break. Doesn't matter. We can't spend that money on a water line. We need streets repaired. Doesn't matter. We can't spend that money on anything but streets and alleys. I should street. I said, they're wrong, didn't I? Streets and alleys, that's the one that you spent it on. I was thinking about library and all this other too. But each of the different special purpose funds there, kind of the name helps describe what that restriction is. Then you've got your bond and interest funds, your capital projects funds, and then your business funds. And they changed the name on that a few years ago to business funds because they want you to realize in the state of Kansas, the utility funds are treated as a business. And there's actually a statute out there that says, once you pay all the bills of that equipment or that utility fund, you can transfer or do whatever you want with that money. But you have to pay all the bills first. We don't want to spend that cash down though. We need to have reserves. You know, we have aging infrastructure in the state of Kansas. It takes some seed money to be able to get some of those grants. You know, a lot of times they're ninety-ten grant. Or even some of the loans that are out there require you to have some matching portion to it. So we've got to be able to have money set aside, built up, to be able to tackle that aging infrastructure. But if you look down there, very bottom totals, you can see we started the year out with $8,443,000 of cash carryover, unencumbered cash. We brought in thirteen point seven million. We spent fifteen, so we ended the year with seven million. So it looks like we had a big decrease. But I'm going to point you back up to about halfway through that other page. You had a wastewater treatment facility project that started the year out with four point seven and actually ended the year with three point seven. So that was the bond money that you actually have setting in your accounts that you get to spend on that project. So that's going to be decreasing. This next year, you're going to decrease your cash by another three million because you're going to finish out that project. Also on the general fund, going from the million down to four sixty-two, you are running the airport through the general fund. You guys should know that. The numbers, you've seen the numbers before. The FAA project requires us to spend the money and then wait on reimbursement. And you've spent a lot of airport money waiting on them to reimburse you at year end. And so that will probably go the other way during this next year, once the FAA reimburses us for some of those grants expenditures. So it's not that we had a, oh, gosh, we cleared down to $400,000 in the general fund. We're using that cash to be able to help float that project. Does that make sense? Then down there towards the bottom, you can see there's a reconciliation of the cash of where you have your cash held. You had a million thirty, or a million, a thousand thirty-one dollars in cash on hand. You have some checking accounts and then some investments down there towards the bottom to make up the eighteen point two million dollars of cash on hand. All right, the footnotes, page is six. Through about seventeen, eighteen, somewhere in there, the words to the footnotes to back up the numbers. Footnote number one, by far is the longest. It describes what Kansas cash basis and budget laws are. We pick up any, well, I would say ninety percent of the cities in the state of Kansas, you pick up their audit, you're going to see these same footnotes because we're following the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide. And it's, it basically defines what cash receipts are, what expenditures are, what our budget process is. Where you get into information that's specific to you is on the bottom of page nine, footnote number two, in which we talk about compliance with Kansas statutes. Did you read through that? You can see that we did not find any statutory violations. The top of the next page talks about deposits and investments because we are limited in the state of Kansas of how and where we can invest our monies. We have $8 million. We can't just go out and put it in the stock market to try to make more interest or more income. We are limited. And when you read through that down there towards the bottom, it's the last paragraph, you're going to see that all of your monies were secured at year end. They have what they call a concentration of credit risk, meaning you gave your money to somebody else to hold. There's the possibility that that bank could fail. You go out and give pledge securities to cover your monies so that if the bank wouldn't go under, you'd be insured to get your cash back. Footnote number four, at the bottom of page ten, is your capital lease obligation. You just had one more, or the one more year on the copier and it paid off. Actually, I liked the presentation over on page eleven a little bit better. It includes the capital leases and includes that copier, but also includes all your bonds. You can see the 2012 bonds, which pay off in November of twenty-two, you had $45,000 left on those. You've got the eleven, the twelve, the fourteen, the seventeen, and the twenty bonds. In which the twenty bonds are the ones that, that's that cash that you have sitting out there in that one fund for the wastewater project. The next page is the payoff of those loans. And in, in all governments, we look, we always schedule out the debt in five years and then five-year increments after that because, you know, most of your planning's done in five-year phases, the capital planning. Top of the next page talks about operating leases. You rent a few items. We disclose how much rent you've paid and any future commitments. Footnote number seven, we talked about the economic development loans that are out there. Footnote number eight talks about capers. We talked about, it's on the top of the next page. You contributed $145,000 into capers last year on behalf of your employees and $216,000 into the KPNF program this last year. Then down right below that is your share of the state's shortfall at December thirty-first of twenty-one. I understand the state's passed something. They're going to try to fund that if, hopefully in the future, it's a, it's going to be funded over years. So any future senator, house could actually cancel that. But the plan right now is that we're going to fund that liability, but that is the shortfall. If they gave capers to you, that would be your liability. So we're just going to disclose that there. Again, we were talking earlier, that GAAP financial statement, if you were doing GAAP financial statements, that shows up as your liability, as if you did owe it. Capital projects at the bottom of that page, we list out all the projects you have, the authorization and the amount expended. You know, we go through one of the budget, they call it Kansas cash basis and budget laws. Meaning you can't pay the bill if you don't have the cash in the bank, and you can't pay the bill if you don't have public approval. The public approval is through the budget process. Your capital projects are not usually budgeted. They are specifically authorized. And so this footnote is disclosing to show that we are under the authorized amount. That's why all your construction guys will come back with a $1,500 change order because they know by law, they can't get paid unless they come to the public and get that approval, that change order approved in a public forum. Top of the next page is your notes, loans receivable, just a disclosure. We have one left. And then you've got your other long-term obligations down below that. It continues on the next page, then we talk about risk management. You do handle that through the purchase insurance policies. Footnote number thirteen at the top of page seventeen is interfund transfers. You glance down through there, you can see there's a statutory number beside every one of those. So all of our statutes were within statutory requirements, or all our transfers were within statutory guidelines. We talked about COVID nineteen and footnote number fourteen, it is still an issue. And then subsequent events at the very bottom in which there are the, all right, we'll talk about the rest of this pretty quickly here. Page eighteen is schedule number one. Define, again, defined by the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, as to show users at a glance that we're in compliance with the budget laws. So otherwise, we get that public approval. Very last column over there, as you glance down through there, you can see that all of our funds were actually under budget. So our general fund was $5 million under budget. The special highway fund was $164,000 under budget. So we spent less than what we had publicly approved in our budget in the last August meeting that you had. Then a bunch of the schedules there, on schedule two, those are quite a few pages, are all the funds. Those are all the funds list out the prior year, like the very top line on page nineteen is at warm taxes. In two thousand twenty, you collected $871,000 in property taxes. In two thousand twenty-one, we collected a million forty-two, but we actually levied a million sixty-nine. So that $27,000 that shows up in that last column, that's your taxpayers that did not pay their tax, property taxes this last year. But the hope is that comes in on the line below that, the link with taxes. As you can see there, we collected in two thousand twenty-one, delinquent taxes of $11,581, which are the people that did not pay their taxes in previous years. But it lists all of your funds. This format follows your state budget forms that you approve in August each year. So you can always refer back to this. I know sometimes you get a little deeper in your budgeting process. You know, Amber will give you a supplies line and a contractual line where this is looking at personnel, contractual commodity capital outlet. You've only got four categories in each of the different departments where you might actually approve a more detailed budget. So with that being said, I said I'm not going to go through each of those different pages. I'm going to have you turn all the way back to page forty-nine. If you do, there was, I think, only one change in the numbers from where you last seen them to how they show up in the audit. When we were doing our testing, a bill came in in January that was actually for December work that we ended up booking back to December. So there was one account spail that was added. So the numbers was only that different from what you previously seen. But on page forty-nine, there is a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. As you glance down through there, you can see that we spent $5.2 million of federal funds. It's always broke down by US Department. US Department of Transportation was a total of four point four. Health and Human Services, sixteen thousand. HUD, by twenty-six, which was the CDVG grant, that is a HUD grant. And then US Department of Treasury was $247,000. We put the receipts in there, so it makes it easier to tie back to your books because the dispersment side is going to be what they call on the GAAP basis of accounting. We go ahead and include payables and all the different things that are required to be included there. But I think that's a positive because that's $5.2 million of taxpayers' monies that's coming out of the bigger taxpayer's pocket rather than our local taxpayer's property taxes.
Could you tell us what's the, what's that threshold that you have to do this federal grant reporting?
It's $750,000.
That's why we haven't hit it with CDVG before.
Yes. Most of the, yeah, most of your CDVGs stay around the $500,000 mark, and so the airports were what really put you over this year. And then we've got a few of the cities, the ARPA money next year will count. So when you start spending ARPA money, that's going to count towards that seven fifty plus you'd have your airport and everything else going. You're probably going to have, hit it again next year. Page fifty-one and fifty-two is the first of the report because we follow the government auditing standards. This is looking at internal controls and compliance at the upper city level. This would be, we came in and bankruptations weren't being completed. We didn't like the way you're doing cash receiving or cash dispersments. If we had any problems with internal controls, this is, we, this would be where we would disclose that. As you read through that report, you're going to see it as an unmodified report because we did not have any problems with internal controls. The next three pages take that down to what they call the major program level, in which we do test compliance and internal controls. And your airport grant being the largest, that's the program that we tested as a major program. Meaning we tested reporting, we tested Davis Bacon, we tested expenditures to make sure you had documentation behind your expenditures. The reports were approval, expenditures were approved, all those different either areas of compliance. This report also is an unmodified opinion because we had no problems when we tested the federal monies with the airport program. And page fifty-six is where everybody says, I should have went in the first place. With the government auditing standards report, the federal government does not want to turn page by page. They want to look at one-page synopsis of everything I just told you. Like the first bold heading that says financial statement. That was the audit report that was on page one, two, and three. You read through there, it says it was an adverse opinion. However, it was an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. The next bold heading says internal control over financial reporting. That was the audit report that was on page fifty-one and fifty-two. As you can see, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance that's required to be reported under government auditing standards. Then the next bold heading says federal awards. That was the report that was on page fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five. Again, you can glance down through there, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. It was an unmodified opinion. Audit findings were no. There's the program that we tested as major, and then auditee qualify, it was a lower risk auditee. We are marked as a no. Every city and school district in the state of Kansas is marked as no because we are following Kansas cash basis rules. The federal government does not recognize that regulatory basis of accounting. They only recognize GAAP. And then the state of Kansas, we've got Wichita, Lake Lawrence, and maybe a handful of others that are following GAAP. It doesn't make sense because you've got to get an engineer involved with a GAAP audit to determine when our streets are going to be depreciated. You've got to capitalize all your infrastructure. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. These financial statements, I, actually, if you go out on the bond market, a Kansas bond will most likely sell before other states because we have that basis of accounting. You can't spend it if you don't have it in the bank, and you can't spend it if you don't have that public approval. So it's a safe basis of accounting. But unfortunately, in the federal rule world, it results in you being a, not a low-risk auditee, which really doesn't mean anything other than we have to test more than forty percent of your federal funds in any one year. If you're a lower-risk auditee, we only have to test twenty percent of your federal funds. Really doesn't have an impact on anything except for your next audit, your next federal audit. And then down at the very bottom, you can see findings all say none. All right, there is a separate letter that was in commission packets only. That is a letter to those charged with governance. When I hit the button, that's what it's, that's the title of it when I print it out. I'm going to make light of that because we did not have any problems or disagreements with management while we were here. It is required, if we give it to you in writing, to tell you now. Used to be, we would come to you and say, Amber's not cooperating, maybe won't make her, so you guys are going to have to make a cooperative or else we're not going to be able to get the audit done. You know, that hasn't happened. So we, but we have to tell you that in writing now that we didn't have any disagreements or problems with management. It is important you do read through it because it's, like I said, it's called a letter to those charged with governance. Then attached to that letter, on the third page, you're going to see the adjustment that we had. Actually, it's on the back of the second page. We double site. We're trying to save it. That's the adjustment that we had. Would be the difference, actually, number two. Number one is just the accounts receivable for K-MAG. But number two would be that accounts receivable or accounts payable that we found during our testing. And then the very last section of that is what they call the client representation letter. I always call it the reminder letter because as management reads through that, they should have talked to us about everything that's in that letter. No material conflicts of interest, no material lawsuits, no problems with the IRS, Department of Labor, those types of issues. Again, this is a boilerplate letter because we didn't have any of those kind of issues that arose that needed to be disclosed in that letter. But it is required that we give you a copy of that letter now so you know what representations have been made between the auditor and management. Questions? It's a pretty quick presentation. There's lots of information in there, but the numbers, like I said, you shouldn't be surprised by them.
Thank you, and thank you to Amber for all your work putting that together. We really appreciate it, especially the explanation.
No problem. All right, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to accept the audit, the authorization, and authorize the mayor to sign the management representation letter.
Second.
And the motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Lambert, to accept the audit and authorize the mayor to sign the management representation letter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Bit approval for Motion passes. Bid approval for CDVG demolition grant.
Hello there. How are you guys? Good. So we are coming to you guys in regards to bid number two. There were some leftover grant dollars that in visiting with Amy and Bruno, we would like to try and utilize. Otherwise, we will be sending back grant dollars of two thousand four hundred in regard to the CDVG grant. So we went ahead and had a asbestos inspection done on two properties that are in the floodplain. So it would be nice to see those taken care of and no longer of life situation. The bid that we received and was the only bid that we received was nineteen thousand four sixty for those two homes as they did contain asbestos and that's usually what triggers those bids to go up a little bit. So that being said, there were only four thousand eight hundred dollars at twenty, two thousand four hundred dollar match local, two thousand four hundred dollar match CDVG grant dollars that were available from the last project, therefore leaving a deficit. And visiting with Amy and Bruno, there is money in the CIP demolition program that could be utilized to offset that. So that's what I have before you. Three sixteen East First Street and three ten East First Street.
Edmund Workman was the owner. He volunteered. He started the whole sending letters. I think while he was one of the volunteers to get to. And there were the last two. We had one more that they backed out.
If we do this, this would leave about eight thousand left in the local demolition program for the remainder of the year after we account for the ones that we've already had.
From all our commandments, even estimating the two connotations I got going. One, we'll probably not have spent any money because we are holding insurance proceed. I think that's going to be coming down pretty soon anyway. But the other one that we're condemning, I, I estimated that pretty high and with that commitment and these, we could, we'll still have about eighty-four hundred dollars left in CIP for the demolition program, which our maximum refund is four thousand, so that would at least get a couple more. And I know I've got some applications out there, but I haven't seen them yet, so we'll see. Actually, one person said he's waiting on another estimate. We got how many twenty-some people on the list for, for, you know, contractors, demolition contractors, and they wait for bid number two so they can turn in the application. So we'll see. But I've got other budget lines too if we get into it in a year. We'll be okay, but.
So how would this, if it's a CDVG grant, you'll have to wait five years?
To rebuild on that.
To rebuild. So if we use our local money with this, how does, how's that going to affect it?
It's still, I think that's what the one source thing goes about. It's still with all of the CDVG grant rule.
Yeah. So with there only being two thousand four hundred worth of grant dollars, we could apply that only to one house and then it would alleviate the other.
I don't imagine I'd go and rebuild that there right away.
But I was just curious because they're two different programs, two different rules.
Yeah, with your new BRIGHT program, that doesn't have the waiting period though, right?
That is correct.
You have another program?
Yeah, they just came back.
Oh, that's the latest one. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, study that one.
He said three ten and three sixteen.
Any other questions?
With, is there any, is there any contradiction on the property owners' part with this?
No, not on CDVG.
Okay.
Grant. I mean, we thought about trying to go around and trying to figure out if you can get on the demo program or anything like that. But I've asked him more several times over the years, you know, made that available, but.
So then if we only, if we use the grant money for only one house, would he be, the other one require his match for our program?
We could try and do it that way.
It didn't work with that.
It would refuse the issue. Right. It, it, I don't know.
Might complicate.
We could, we could do the one because they, they did separate them. I asked him to separate it just in case because I didn't know. I didn't think five thousand would get made one, but we could maybe, you know, use the grant money for one and then, but if we do that, I have a great fear that they won't come on the demo program. I, I'm afraid, but, and they're right there. They're like this far apart from each other. And they have been occupied for years. He bought one thirty years ago and they've never gone into it. The stuff that was in there, when he bought it, it's still in there. So that's at least not completely dilapidated yet, but I don't, people get themselves in a pickle that way, I think. Financially. And they got something for something. Twenty years later, it's a, it's a burden to do.
Principally, it's, it's difficult to do that without owner contribution practically. If you have an opportunity to bring them down, I think it's, would serve the community well.
It definitely makes the BRIGHT definition straight if they do.
And none of the others that we did under CDVG, there was no owner contribution on any of them, but it was a fifty-fifty local match as opposed to a lot higher.
Sure.
Yeah, we discontinued our demo program in nineteen and twenty, nineteen or twenty.
Just last year.
Yes, or twenty-one. Yeah, okay, that, to get the match for this.
Sure. I, I would move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Kansas Department of Commerce requesting sole source approval and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Since construction services entered into a contract for demolition.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lambert's, second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, stand signed. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you. Change order number two, demolition contract for Sixth Street Park.
Commissioners, we have the demolition contractor take down the houses for the Sixth Street parking lot, finish the project, and then he did come back and request a little bit more funding. There was more trash in the house than what he was able to see when he went in for his original bid, the tune of eight tons more trash that was hauled off. And so he was requesting an additional five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to that contract. And I'm, I'm thinking this would be okay to go ahead and proceed with. He did a really nice job with the work. He was a little bit, if you'll recall, the second little bit was around seventy thousand dollars. So even if we paid this additional, we aren't even close to what the second bid would have been. We still have ample funds in there, we believe, to cover the, the construction cost of the new parking lot. But we haven't been able to bid, or haven't seen any bids back from that yet, so we're really, really unsure on that, so. Where we're at, but. Talking with Ken Johnson, we, we feel good about authorizing this amount for change order and adding this to the base contract. Additional three cisterns discovered too, I forgot about that. So those were, those were unknown until they started digging in because they have to fill those up to a certain amount of capacity. Actually, no one else called it for them.
Was there any word that with the increase in additional trash, there's also proportionate increase in treasure?
I did not receive word about that. It was my understanding that all treasure had been removed prior to demolition. I, I could be wrong on that.
Try that one, try to find out. I would authorize the city manager to sign change order number two to the demolition contract with Smith. Smith Construction Services adding five thousand four hundred and fifty to the base contract amount you paid from the TIF project fund.
And a motion by Commissioner Lambert's, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the city manager to sign change order number two to the demolition contracts with construction services adding five thousand four fifty to the base contract amount to be paid from the TIF fund. Is there any further discussion?
Obviously, kind of surprises your stuff, more trash found, I think.
No further discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one eighty-seven, the temporary liquor license fee.
The Kansas Legislature decided to decrease, well, to make it a law that you could only charge twenty-five dollars per temporary or special event permit. And I'm not sure what brought that on, but anyway, we charge fifty. And so we, per the league, we do have to change our code. I did ask the league attorney if we could add an admin fee and he said no. So we do have to decrease that and the only difference is that, so I changed fifty to twenty-five dollars per event and then I added the per day. So if anyone does go on a two-day, like a whole weekend thing, we can charge twenty-five per day. That's the only change on this ordinance.
And we need to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Sir.
And a motion by Commissioner Beldon and second by Commissioner Lambert's to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one eighty-seven. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Manager supports.
Mayor Commissioners, I think this last couple of weeks, the people were housing, especially with the wrap-up of the legislative session, some really nice bills that were passed and I went to a, or attended a webinar today that kind of talked about a few of them that I wanted to bring up here that could be applicable to, to our community. One is just that there's about sixty-two million dollars being used in, into the state of Kansas into the middle income housing program and the rural housing revolving loan program between the rest of this year and next year. And so those, those could be helpful to us. They are going to try to do three funding cycles per year, so not just one. That way we can, we miss the first deadline or aren't ready for the first deadline, we can apply in second or third. So about every four months, there'll be an application deadline and those funds will be administered by the Kansas Housing Resource Commission. There was also a House Bill twenty-two thirty-six that authorizes appraisers to exclude sales value, the sales value approach for very rural areas, the counties that are under ten thousand in population, which I believe we still are. So that could be helpful for us next year. You'll notice a lot of assessed valuations went up this year. And for the residential side of things, we're being told that that's due to the increased sales values that have happened in the last year due to demand. And so this, this might be helpful for next year to help kind of keep, keep taxes a little bit lower. There was also some expansion done to the rural housing incentive district, although that basically just added to the city of Topeka in and also allowed for other economically distressed qualified census tracts. And previous to that, there was, I think it was Senate Bill ninety that added in the downtown areas. That was passed earlier in the session too. Senate Bill three sixty-nine was the Affordable Tax Credit Act that allowed for this grant funding to be a match to the liat program or additional opportunities for low-income housing. But the low-income units have to remain low-income units for fifteen years in order to qualify for this money. Also, Senate Bill three seventy-five was the Housing Investor Tax Credit Act, and that supports housing shortage due to economic development. Businesses coming to town or existing business expansion, you can apply for, for up to thirty-two thousand dollars for constructions of, of new homes. So that could be helpful. House Bill twenty-two sixty-eight was a Rural Home Loan Guarantee Act. And so that is, I guess, what you call it, that, that gap that so many loans will go for just eighty percent of the appraised value of the home and then the homeowner has to cover the other twenty percent. This loan would guarantee that, that gap, that twenty percent up to a hundred thousand dollars. And it's specifically for communities of less than ten thousand, ten thousand in population. So again, one, one that could apply to our area. And then there's the shovel program for cities under ten thousand dollars. That's five thousand dollars per project with a twenty percent match. They didn't go into a lot of detail about that one, but that one's out there as well. So a lot of good, good programs out there that could be beneficial for us as we're trying to address housing needs. Keegan was here earlier and this is a brochure that describes the North Central Regional Planning Commission's recent housing incentive. I wanted to send you out some information on that and it was out on the news. A demolition pilot program and moderate income housing rehabilitation pilot programs. The demolition program is patterned very similar to what our local demolition program is that individuals can request up to five thousand dollars for removal of property structures. We cap ours at four, but it's, there's no limits on it and they can rebuild right away. And then for the rehousing rehabilitation program, it's a twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand five hundred dollar rebate to eligible homeowners if they're in one of the county certified or regional, regional planning and if they meet the middle income housing guidelines. So both those programs just opened on Monday and I believe that they are very popular right now. Lots of questions to North Central Regional Planning about those. Additionally, you saw the press release of Libra Center Jerkus and information about our housing study that's happening. So beginning this week, five rural planning came onsite and for the next two weeks, they'll be driving up and down every single city street in Concordia, assessing that physical condition of every single housing structure here in town, including vacant lots. They're going to be triangulating that with some parcel data, with some water meter data to determine vacancy versus occupancy. And they'll put all of that primary data together with this, the qualitative data that they receive back from the stakeholders and from the housing survey. Ended up with a total of three hundred and thirty-three surveys that came trickling in after the deadlines. We really appreciate it for, that participated there.
Will they be able to, sorry not to interrupt, but like for some of those houses where it might be somebody who like maybe is in a, a nursing home or somebody, you know, where they're nice structures. Are those going to be like on a list that's identifiable to you?
Yes, yeah, if we're, if we're aware. So for example, as we provided them the list of homes that didn't have water turned on, if, if we knew for sure that they were vacant because somebody was in a nursing home or because somebody was recently deceased, something of that nature, we were able to notate that on there to give that information back to North Central or to, back to five rural so they can incorporate that information as. I'll try to give them the best information that we have available. And then just a quick update on the Sixth Street parking lot. We did delay the bid opening. It was originally scheduled for May twenty-sixth. And the reason for that is we're still waiting on the photometric study that we requested. We wanted to do the period light fixtures so they tied in with the brown grand, but we want to make sure they provide adequate lighting. So we need to see that photometric study before we tell the contractors that what to bid. This is the light fixture you need to bid. So we hope to have that information very soon so we can get that bidding back on track for that bid opening was delayed. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Staff reports?
I could be sitting on a stand.
Seeing none. Mayor Commissioner reports, start with question.
Solid pool was filled. That was good.
Are you? Just in time before you agree whether.
So when do you start training for lifeguard?
Yeah, they'll start this weekend.
Twelve tomorrow.
In the meantime, splash pad.
Yeah, it's been very busy. Very busy.
Almost like it was a good idea. Just fun being out this weekend, seeing a lot of the graduations, the kids that were put through the schools.
My only comment, I mentioned to Amy too, especially on that housing, those housing programs, just with there are other housing programs that they put out there. It's first come, first served and some communities really don't understand it or it's, this one seems to be more that people who own the homes need to understand it and come forward. And I guess I would just encourage us to look at it as another funding source and to just go after it with folks just because some other communities won't and we could get more than our share. So let's do it.
So ways to capitalize the marketing of that or community engagement. Make sure that everybody's aware of what these are, what they're about, and how they comply.
Especially with air conditioners going out. Be a really nice thing for folks to get air conditioners repaired.
So we, we encourage our city manager to offer as many details as possible in a press release.
So while there's been a press release, so between the city and between Claude Corp, I would hope that there's a lot of work in the sun to try to grab these. Grab these. Okay, that's all I have, so, at this point, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Visit the city commission recess in the executive session to discuss employment personnel issues pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter, except KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen V one, with Penny Lang, Justin Farrell. Amber Farha, and Stacy Smith, in attendance at a reconvenancy commission chamber at six, say six forty-five P M.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz, to move into executive session for all of those reasons, until six forty-five P M, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. There is no action taken?
I would know that we return to executive session for the aforementioned reasons, and then return. Back into commission at seven o'clock.
Second. And a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, no action was taken, I'd like for motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz, to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, on your turn.